At this time, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council Meeting. This meeting is being held at Town Hall Monday evening, March 1st, 2021. This meeting is being broadcast live and will be replayed several times over the next week on the town's cable information channel 1301, and will also be available for viewing on the town's website at lexse.com. This time, I will ask for invocation from Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. Dear Lord, I just thank you for this beautiful day that we've had today and be with this council tonight as we make important decisions that will affect the Town of Lexington and our citizens. Dear Lord, please wrap your arms around all of our elected officials at the local level, the state level, and in our nation, Lord. They have tough decisions to make. Just be with them as they make the best decisions they can. I hope that you will be with all of the citizens who are hurting right now. We have so many in South Carolina and throughout our country, Lord, and just wrap your arms around them and let them feel your grace and your love. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. At this time, if everyone would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. Daryl, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Very good. After some technical difficulties during our virtual meeting in February, that darn Zoom, I decided it would be better to present the State of the Town address when we had everyone together. We have produced a video to highlight the town's 2020 achievements. This video also spotlights many upcoming projects that you will see around town. The video will play on the town's Spectrum Community Access Channel 1301 and again on the town's website. I'd like to thank Daryl for all of his hard work in putting this together and our communications manager Lauren Barnes, who's not with us tonight, for their talent and time in producing the State of the Town video. This time, let's take a look.
Good evening. I'm Mayor Steve McDougal, and this is the 2021 State of the Town Address. We'll review some of our most notable accomplishments from last year and outline what you can expect to see in the year ahead. Despite challenges brought on by the COVID-19 pandemic, 2020 was still a year of growth and progress for the Town of Lexington.
In response to the pandemic, Town Council passed a $1 million limited small business emergency loan program, removed the sunset date on the hospitality tax, which allowed for a 21% cut in property taxes, funding in full for ongoing traffic improvements and funding for future projects as well. In an effort to incentivize the community to spend money in town during the pandemic, council approved a $250,000 utility rebate program that allowed customers to receive a dollar-for-dollar rebate on their monthly bills. The town also suspended water and sewer cutoffs and waived late penalties for multiple services. Our police department was awarded a $40,000 grant for pandemic response, and all of our staff worked to make sure there were no major disruptions in services during this difficult
Last year, the town was able to move forward with multiple construction projects like this one, the Ice House Amphitheater Pavilion.
The open-air building will be the new home to the market starting this spring, and it is also where vendors will set up during concerts at the amphitheater. The design accommodates food truck parking, and it will feature overhead fans and heaters. This latest improvement to the downtown corridor will also be headquarters for events hosted by the town. In addition to the pavilion, women's restrooms were added to the current facilities along with heating and air conditioning of the building.
Construction also began on rebuilding the Gibson Pond Park Dam, which was destroyed during the historic floods of 2015.
The new dam will feature two docks and a walking pier, and we are looking forward to returning the park to its former glory. We expect construction to be complete and for the park to reopen again early to mid-spring. As the Old Mill Dam restoration continues, the town is working to install a one-mile-long lighted walking trail around the entire pond, which will be used once it is filled with water. This year, we anticipate work to begin on the renovation of the Virginia Hilton Park. The master plans include an expansion of more than eight acres with new features, an all-inclusive playground, and updated equipment. In 2020, the town received the Municipal Association Award for its Adaptive Signalization System, which uses state-of-the-art technology to improve traffic flow and decrease travel time. This year, the final phase of the adaptive signals will be installed, which will improve travel through town. Once complete, all town-maintained traffic lights will be synced up onto one network, and all traffic lights will be equipped with cameras that monitor and make real-time adjustments.
Construction is also moving along on widening North Lake Drive here in front of Lexington Elementary School, which is Phase 2 of the Crossroads Improvement Project.
The road headed out of town will be widened to two lanes. Harmon Street will also be extended to connect the North Lake Drive, and Drew Street will be closed off. There will be an additional traffic light put at the new intersection of Harmon Street and North Lake, which will increase green light time at both intersections in the area. Work is expected to get underway at Mineral Springs Road and US 378. A dedicated right-turn lane will be added from 378 onto Mineral Springs to improve traffic flow through the intersection. Another traffic project set to begin later this year is US 378 and Old Cherokee Road. An additional right-turn lane will be constructed. There will be immediate improvement, and the signal will be modified to help with traffic flow. Our police department continues to ensure that Lexington is a safe community. In 2020, they were awarded the Agency of the Year by the South Carolina Department of Public Safety. Our finance department was recognized nationally for transparency and overall financial health. They received the Government Finance Officers Association's Comprehensive Annual Finance Report Award for the 22nd year. They also received the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the 12th year. For decades, the Town of Lexington has been taking steps to improve the water quality in our lakes and streams by making sure sewage is disposed of properly. The town is now set to be the first completed regional sewer system in the Midlands after last year's takeover of the Watergate Wastewater Treatment Facility, which was the last private sewer plant in our area.
All of these projects and progress are a result of the town's vision plan. I'm honored to be the mayor of this great town, and I look forward to serving you in the year ahead.
I'd like to recognize my fellow councilmembers. Mayor Protem Hazel Livingston, Councilwoman Kathy Manis, Councilman Todd Carnes, Councilman Ron Williams, Councilman Steve Baker, and Councilman Todd Lyle. I'd like to thank them and staff for their dedication to this town. Thank you very much. I hope you enjoyed the video as much as I enjoyed making it. We have so much to be proud of here in Lexington, and as you can see, there's a lot more to come. We're excited about the future here in Lexington. At this time, I will report on our executive session this evening. Executive session this evening had three legal issues. One was an issue regarding pending litigation. One was advice regarding agenda items, and one was advice related to town ordinance. We had two contractual issues. One was a downtown development issue, and the second was a rate study contract. No vote was taken in executive session this evening. Do I have a motion to ratify the mayor's executive session report?
Second.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second by Mayor Protem. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Tonight's agenda, are there any deletions on tonight's agenda? Anyone have anything they'd like to pull off the agenda? Hearing none, very good. We'll move into presentations. Our first presentation this evening is from Councilmember Todd Carnes. This is a letter of commendation to Eagle Scout Christian Gonzalez. If you would, please step to the microphone. Mr. Carnes, floor is yours.
All right, Christian, we're gonna read you a letter of commendation here. I'm sure you got a few of these in your journey to your Eagle Scout. So, Christian, on behalf of the Town of Lexington, it is my privilege to honor you on receiving the highest advancement rank of Eagle Scout on December 29th, 2020. We're very proud of you and your accomplishments and dedication to the Boy Scouts of America, especially at such a young age. Many fine American leaders also achieved the Eagle Scout ranking during their youth. There is a long list of those who succeeded in careers as astronauts and presidents, which was influenced by the training they received as scouts. You too will have many opportunities open to you because of your commitment, even during one of the country's worst pandemics. Your project to distribute teacher help kits to 60 teachers at Rocky Creek Elementary School was very admirable since it was during a time when teachers were balancing new methods of teaching between in-school and virtual learning. The kits contained very timely and useful items, including hand sanitizer, hand soap, face masks, gloves, tissues, wipes, sticky notes, pencils, and an encouraging note. You have demonstrated that today's youth believe in character, honesty, and integrity. All these characteristics are critical for all of us to succeed in making our communities and our world a better place. As you embark on your future, no matter where your path leads, we want you to know that you have our support, and we will always be available to you. As a token of our appreciation for your hard work, I'm going to present you with a gold lapel pinned with the Town of Lexington's seal. Keep this as a reminder that no matter where success takes you, always remember your strong roots run deep in this community that is very proud of you. Sincerely, Mayor and Council of the Town of Lexington. So, Christian, much congratulations, and please speak any words if you would like now.
Well, I just want to say thank you. I appreciate it, and hard work pays off.
Stay right there. I'm gonna come down and present it to you, but I also want to just to note that Christian's got an older brother, Xavier, who was here not too long ago, and also earned the Eagle Scout. And his father Jorge is out there, who's one of my neighbors and leads one of the troops. And so, let me present this, and Jorge, you and Christian both come up.
Nice job, gentlemen.
Come where you want.
Dad, if you'd like to say something, you're certainly welcome to. You raised two fine men. Both of them earned Eagle Scouts. That's a big deal. If you'd like to say something, we'd love to hear from you.
I definitely appreciate you guys recognizing my boys. We've been living here in South Carolina for 14 years, so we wanted to do something adventurous and decided to join Boy Scouts, and both my boys Xavier and Christian loved it, and it actually drove me to be one of the leaders. So, you know, I'm honored for you guys to recognize them and go through this journey with them. Thank you.
Very good, Dad. Thank you. Wonderful. Our next proclamation will be read by Councilmember Todd Lyle. This is in honor of the 100th birthday of Mr. D. Murray Price. Councilmember Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, just for a little background, last week, Mayor McDougal attended a very special 100th birthday party for Murray Price, where the mayor presented him with a proclamation and a key to the town. Mr. Price is from Lexington and is a very decorated WWII veteran. He flew a B-24 bomber in 40 missions over enemy territory in the Pacific Theater and succeeded in bringing his entire crew home. To be recorded as part of the town's record, which is why I'm doing this right now, it is my honor to read a copy of that proclamation that was given to Mr. Price during his celebration of his 100th birthday this past week. Again, this is for the record because this was done, but we cannot ignore the amazing work and sacrifice by the Price family and Mr. Murray Price. I will now read the proclamation. Whereas on February 24th, 1921, D. Murray Price was born in Lexington County, where he would begin his 100-year journey of dedication to God, his family, his country, and his community. And whereas the headlines in February 1921 also included "work progressing on Lexington roads" and "the new dam at George's Pond," both of which are still in the news 100 years later. And whereas D. Murray Price went on to marry his sweetheart and dance partner, Miss Frances Addy, raised four wonderful children, fought for this country's freedom as a pilot during WWII, became the CEO of a national company, still serves his beloved church, St. Stevens Lutheran Church, and continues to find time for a community that honors his lifetime of commitments. And whereas, we need more men today like Mr. D. Murray Price, as he received many awards and accolades during his life. However, his main concern was a simple prayer, the safety for his men, doing what was right, and returning home to his wife and family, where he could teach others about sacrifice, integrity, and rebuilding a better world. And whereas, the only way that we can honor D. Murray Price today is to express our commitment to him to preserve his story of love and grace for future generations, so that they too can learn that hard work and dedication are still the characteristics of great men and women. And whereas, the entire Lexington community is a better place to live, worship, and raise a family because of a man who was born 100 years ago today on February 24th and who continues to show us real-life principles. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council of the Town of Lexington, South Carolina, that on February 24th, 2021, be proclaimed as D. Murray Price Day. And the Town of Lexington and Town Council joins family and friends in wishing Mr. Price a very happy 100th birthday, and wish to thank him for showing all of us how to live each day as an adventure. Amen. It doesn't say that, but I just added that. Reclaim this 24th day of February 2021.
Mr. Lyle, thank you very much for reading it. I knew that was a lengthy proclamation, but I appreciate you taking the time to do that. Mr. Murray Price is a very special man, and Dan knows Dan is his neighbor. And it was funny to watch seven police cars roll into a neighborhood, and then Dan light off 100 bottle rockets that sounded like gunfire. So, the whole neighbors around us probably thought something bad was going on, but actually it was a celebration. So, Dan, thank you for your part, too. Chief, thank you for your part as well. Without you, we couldn't have made that possible, but thank you for you and your staff. This time, we will move into public hearings. Our first public hearing tonight is final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 3500-03-025, located at 4878 Sunset Boulevard. Is anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. Item number two is final reading of an ordinance entering into a mutual aid agreement with the City of Myrtle Beach Police Department. Is there anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. Item number three, final reading of an ordinance for a budget adjustment in the police department. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Very good. That concludes our public hearings for this evening. At this time, we will move into old business. Our first item of old business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. It's final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 3500-03-025, located at 4878 Sunset Boulevard. Councilmember Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Rudolph Ritchie owns 4.1 acres located at 4878 Sunset Boulevard and has petitioned to annex the property. Veterinarian clinic and kennel is being planned on the site. Properties in town near this one are zoned general commercial, and Sunset Boulevard is already classified as an arterial road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their January meeting and recommended the same zoning and road classification for this parcel. I make a motion for final reading approval.
Ms. Manis makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams seconds. Is motion any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number two is final reading of an ordinance entering into a mutual aid agreement with the City of Myrtle Beach Police Department. Councilmember Todd Carnes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Lexington Police Department is entering into a mutual aid agreement with City of Myrtle Beach Police Department. This agreement is for 2021 Memorial Weekend Atlantic Beach Bike Fest event. The proposed agreement is attached. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Carnes makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker seconds. Is motion any further discussion?
I'm just happy to see this, Mr. Mayor. I will be down there that weekend, and I'm glad we'll have our officers down to help.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Manis. Anyone else? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. This is final reading of an ordinance for a budget adjustment for the police department. Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The police department needs to replace a vehicle and purchase additional laptops. Further, a new SRO is requested that the town will need to fund 25% of the new employee startup cost. Additionally, PBNT needs to purchase a new AC unit for PCI. Funds are available in the PBT repairs account but need to be moved to capital. The town has received reimbursements for COVID leave, therefore some funds are available in the police wages and benefits accounts, with the remainder available from funds left over from the chiller purchase in PBNT. Following budget adjustments requested, reduce the police wages and benefits by $57,000, PBNT operating by $6,600, PBNT capital by $33,000, with a total of $96,600. Add to the police capital vehicle $55,000, police capital layouts of $16,000, police capital for SROs 25% of $18,000, police operating for the SRO 25% of $1,000, and PBNT capital AC unit of $6,600, for a total of $96,600. There'll be net change to appropriations will be zero. I make a motion for final reading approval to adjust the budget.
Mr. Williams makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Manis seconds. Is motion any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we'll move into new business. Our first item of new business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. This is first reading of an ordinance rezoning a portion of Lexington County Tax Map Number 4320-09-003, located on Addy Lane. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. BVW Development submitted a request to rezone a portion of a parcel, a portion of a parcel located on Addy Lane, from general commercial to protected residential, too. Their request is being made to facilitate the development of a few single-family homes on the property. Properties adjacent to this one are zoned general commercial and protected residential. The Planning Commission reviewed this rezoning during their February meeting and recommended approving their request. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Mr. Baker makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyle seconds. Is motion any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Lyle. This is the accommodations tax. Councilmember Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee met on February 10th, 2021, to review accommodations tax projects requesting funds from the 65% ATAX fund allocation. A spreadsheet listing their requests, the ATAX Committee Award Recommendations, and council's recommendations from the February 16th, 2021 work session is attached. Award recommendations total $162,500 of the available $226,669 in 65% funding. The available 65% funds are a combination of FY 2019 and FY 2020 ATAX funds. Additionally, a budget provided by the Greater Lexington Chamber and Visitor Center regarding the designation of FY 2021 30% Advertising and Promotion Special Fund is also attached herein. The FY 2021 Chamber designated 30% amount totals $48,170.22. Mr. Mayor, with all these attachments, I would make a motion for council approval of the same.
Councilmember Lyle makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams seconds. Is motion any further discussion? Very good. Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Mayor Protem Hazel Livingston. This is the LPD workers' compensation coverage. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Currently, officers with the Lexington Police Department do not have workers' compensation coverage when working off-duty assignments. The Lexington Police Department is requesting an increase of the hourly rate from $3,850 to $4,046 to protect officers who are not protected under the color of law and liability insurance coverage. I make a motion for approval of this increase.
Mayor Protem makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker seconds. Is motion any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Lyle.
Sure. I just would like to clarify that this hourly increase is what we're reading into this, but that this is in fact adding the coverage. Is that right, Mr. Poole?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay.
That hourly increase is the fee for people who are hiring those officers to work off-duty, just to be clear. It's not a fee we pay.
Right. So, we're adding coverage to them, is my point.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Any further discussion? We have a motion by Mayor Protem and a second by Mr. Baker. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. This is an appointment of the municipal court judge. Councilmember Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, and it is such an honor for me to be able to read this one. Judge Brian Jeffcoat was initially appointed full-time municipal court judge in April of 2015. In 2017, he was appointed to a four-year term by Town Council as allowed by South Carolina's statute. His appointment expires April of 2021. Town Council is asking to consider reappointing him to a four-year term to start April the 3rd, 2021. I make a motion for appointment of Judge Brian Jeffcoat to a new four-year term.
I second it.
Ms. Manis makes a motion. Mayor Protem seconds it before anybody else asks the question. Which is, I think, the same sentiment from everyone up here. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Judge, if you would not mind, please step forward. We'll have the swearing-in ceremony.
Congratulations again. Absolutely an outstanding job. You took us from deficit of cases back to zero. Unfortunately, COVID has put us back in deficit, but I'm sure it'll get us out of that pretty quickly. And thank you for everything that you've done for us. Would you please put your hand on the Bible, and that's Miss Pett's Bible, so she's always with us. Repeat after me, please. I do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified. I do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified. According to the Constitution of this state, to exercise the duties of the office to which I have been appointed, and that I will, to the best of my ability, discharge the duties thereof, and preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state, and of the United States. thereof, and preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state, and of the United States. So, don't be upset. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
The two.
I have left. Mr. Mayor, while you're walking up here, I would just like to say for our council members who have not been in the courtroom to hear Judge Jeffcoat, you need to take some time to do that. He is absolutely wonderful. He can find people, send them to jail, do whatever, and they think he's their best friends. So he is so wonderful and just really represents the town of Lexington in a professional way, and I just want to thank you for that.
Judge, again, thank you very much for everything you do for our town. We really appreciate it. Anyone else have anything? Very good. We'll move on to our next item of business. Our next item will be presented by Town Administrator Britt Poole and the Town Prosecutor Cliff Coon. This is a proposed revocation of a business license. Mr. Poole.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, town staff is asking council to consider revoking the business license issued to Smoke O's 2 Tobacco and Vape at 57, I'm sorry, 5570 Sunset Boulevard Suite C. Their request is pursuant to 111.15E of the Town of Lexington Code of Ordinance, which indicates that the license official may suspend the license when the license official determines that a licensee has engaged in an unlawful activity or nuisance related to the business. The request is also pursuant to 111.15B, which indicates that a license may be revoked if a licensee has breached any condition upon which his license was issued or has failed to comply with the provisions of this chapter, and 111.15C, which indicates that a license may be revoked if a licensee has obtained a license through fraud, misrepresentation, faults, or misleading statement, evasion, or suppression of material fact in the license application. I would like to read a statement. It's rare that we have these hearings. I want to read a statement so that there's a general understanding of the process. This item is a hearing to consider revoking the business license of the licensee indicated previously. Cliff Coon will present the item on behalf of staff who are requesting that the license be revoked. During this hearing, all parties have the right to be represented by council to present testimony and evidence and to cross-examine witnesses. The staff case will be presented first, and the licensee shall be allowed to respond after staff. These proceedings are being recorded and may be transcribed at the expense of the party who is so requesting. These proceedings are subject to rules of evidence and procedure as determined by town council, which I went through earlier. Essentially, staff will go first and then followed up by the licensee. Town council shall, by majority vote of members present, render a written decision based on findings, in fact, and application of the standards in the business license ordinance. Written decision may be issued tonight, but it may not be issued later than the next council meeting or within 30 days. And the written decision must be served on all parties or their representatives and shall be the final decision of the town. I will, at this time, turn it over to Cliff Coon to present the town's case.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to ask you to understand if it's okay to revoke it.
Yes, sir, please.
Basically, is it okay to just stand here and let this be a pretty good [inaudible]?
Okay.
Do you want me to go to the microphone?
Yeah, we're probably going to need you to the microphone. They can't hear you. So if we're going to record it and need to transcribe it, we're probably going to need you to the microphone.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, our first business with the Tori Bassett of the town building and planning department.
Ms. Bassett, if you would, if you are going to speak, please talk clearly into the microphone so that we can record it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Bassett, where do you work?
For the town of Lexington, permitting and zoning department.
What are your duties there?
Issue permits and assist with business licensing.
Are you one of the first people that a potential licensee meets and deals with?
Yes.
And in that regard, did you, and I apologize to the gentleman, I may mispronounce his name, Abdul Rahman Al Saidi, did you talk to him about his business license application?
It was the gentleman that owned the Smoke-O vape. He was coming in to inquire about applying for a business license.
And did you have a series of emails to and from Mr. Al Saidi?
Yes.
Did you bring those with you today?
I did.
All right. I'm going to hand you the document and ask you to identify it. Is that the chain of the emails?
Yes, this is.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to offer this as our first exhibit.
I guess I don't know how we're doing this. If we're going to offer exhibits, is he going to show it to council so I can object to them? I don't know how we're doing it.
No, sir. I don't know if you were paying attention when the town administrator got up and spoke.
He said rules of evidence would apply. We can test to identify and show it to council before he offers his evidence.
He also said the rules go by what we say the rules are, and this is not a criminal proceeding. This is a civil proceeding. We're going to let the prosecutor present, and then you'll have your opportunity.
I don't have a problem with him going first, but even under the civil rules, I have a right to look at a piece of evidence before it's offered and see what it is.
I sent it to him this afternoon, Your Honor.
Yes, sir. You got a copy of it this afternoon.
I don't know what he's presenting. I haven't seen it. It's not fair to offer it without letting opposing side take a look at the document.
Mr. Coon, are you going straight down the list that you gave him today?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
I have the list, and it's not included on the documents that we picked up from.
Well, you haven't checked your email, if that's your position.
I have emails from him, but that is not the documents that he provided in the list that it was in. So once again, I just want to see what he's offering, so I can know what we're talking about.
Mr. Coon, do you have a problem with that?
I'll just warn you that that is not how this proceeding is going to continue. He's going to present the case. You'll have an opportunity to do yours as well. If you have any questions at that time, you'll be welcome to ask those at that time.
And I apologize, Mr. Poole, you said the rules of evidence would apply, and the rules of evidence specifically say that council may look at documents before they're offered. That is why I stood up, because he said the rules of evidence apply.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Can I make this statement?
Absolutely. Mr. Cunningham.
The statement that was made that this is a hearing that's civil in nature, it is not subject to the South Carolina rules of civil procedure, because this is an in-house decision by the town council whether to affirm a decision made by their staff. It's not a court hearing.
Right.
So that's just something I want to make clear, that the council by ordinance determines the rules of the procedure.
Right. So did you hear that? I'm sorry. I want to make sure you heard that.
Yes, and I said it. I only responded because Mr. Poole says rules of evidence apply.
Okay. Very good. So this is a decision that we are going to make whether our staff acted correctly or not. Simply, that's the facts. Yes, sir, Mr. Coon, please continue.
[inaudible].
Yes, sir.
If I could reread my statement, because I think it was misheard. I said these proceedings are subject to the rules of evidence and procedure as shall be prescribed by town council, not the state rules of evidence.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir, Mr. Coon, please continue.
Thank you, Your Honor. Now, if you take a look at those items that have been introduced as State's Exhibit Number One, are these the emails that you had back and forth with Mr. Al Saidi?
Yes.
All right. Just, you don't have to read them all, because they'll review them, but just tell the council what the substance was of your conversations by email with Mr. Al Saidi.
Once Mr. Al Saidi emailed me the initial application for location review of business, he indicated that he was doing tobacco sales along with vape sales. And in previous amendments that we have had, tobacco shops are discouraged in the ordinance. So I had let Mr. Al Saidi know that based on the way that he had presented his location review, it could be potentially denied based on his type of business that he wanted to do in the town. So I recommended that he reevaluated his application, potentially resubmitted, and he wanted me to continue. So I let him know that I would talk to the zoning director, and we would go further after that, once we had discussed and fully gone through our ordinance to see what he could fully do and not do. So I had indicated that in the emails to him and let him know that we had, I had spoke directly with John Hanson, the zoning director, and we looked over the ordinance, and as long as he was not selling any paraphernalia like pipes or other related smoking apparatuses that are not specifically made for vaping, he would be able to sell cigarettes, tobacco bags, that sort of deal, that just strictly involves tobacco. I also included a copy of the ordinance and a link to the ordinance on the website and emailed that to him as well.
All right. Did he respond to you as to what his position was about the things that you told him he could not sell?
He said verbatim, whatever you think is best, as far as tobacco-related products, we will carry cigarettes, cigars, tobacco bags, premium cigars, et cetera. There will be no pipes.
Now, did the town ever discover that Mr. Al Saidi was not abiding by the agreement that was in the legal?
There was a complaint that was brought to our attention, to our business license coordinator. She had received a phone call that indicated that they were doing such things that we told them that they could not do.
And what, if anything, did you do when you found out?
It was turned over to John Hanson, our zoning director.
Now, Ms. Bassett, I'm going to let the defense attorney ask me a question.
My name is Dennis Spitaling Miles. William Spitaling right next door. I just want to ask, do you have a copy of the actual permit that you released to the company?
A permit that I released to the, are you talking about the initial application that they submitted?
The business permit.
The business license.
We have the application and the study permit. Sorry, can I ask you to hear that a little?
Yes.
What is the name of the company that was given to us?
The application name is Smokers Tobacco and Vape.
Okay. And what was the designation on the business license for? What were they licensed to you? I mean, if you're not the person to answer, I'll ask the person to answer.
Yeah, I honestly don't remember what we classified it as.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Tori.
I'd like to call Sonia Lee. Ms. Lee, where do you work?
I work in the Planning, Building, and Technology Department. I handle business licensing.
And what do you do with regard to business licensing?
I review the applications. Once Tori has submitted, once the location review has gone through the process and been signed off on, and then it's, the customer signs the final documents, pays for their business license fee, and then I print the license and send it to Kathy Roberts, our finance director, for her to sign off on. Kathy Farr, I'm sorry.
And was that done in this case?
Yes, sir. Our normal procedure was followed.
All right. Now, in your capacity, do you ever receive any complaints from citizens about businesses that aren't abiding by their licenses?
I receive citizen complaints on a regular basis, not...
Did you ever receive a complaint in this case?
I received a phone call complaint. Yes, sir, I did.
All right. Did the person identify themselves?
No, they did not.
What was the substance of the complaint? Now, say exactly what they said. What was the substance of it?
The caller had called and asked me if our zoning ordinances had changed in reference to vape shops, and I told him, no, they had not. And then he went on to name a few things that were, he was aware that were not allowed under our ordinance that were being sold at the location. So I immediately went and told my director, John Hanson, that I had received a phone call, a verbal complaint, and, you know, what did I need to do at that point.
And what did anything happen after that?
I turned it over to John Hanson, and I'm not 100% sure of the rest of it, but I believe the police chief was contacted, and that's all that I know.
Please answer any questions, Mr. Spitaling.
Are you the person of the company? What is that, a license that you're...
It is a retail store. I don't, I would have to look up the specific NACs code to give you the exact verbiage.
Okay. And that would be what kind of items are included in the retail sale permit? Or whether they're allowed to sell?
Well, it would not list them, but it's based on what is listed in the NACs code, but that would follow along with our business license ordinance and zoning ordinance. There would not be any exclusions listed on that license. We don't do that for any business.
I guess that would be my next question. There's no prohibited items on that business license?
Not listed on the business license, no, sir.
Okay. Is it the same kind of retail license that a gas station would have?
Well, not the same NACs code, no, sir.
Could you explain the difference, sir?
The NACs code is the North American Industrial Classification System, and every industry is assigned a six-digit code. So you look at what type of business it is, and retail is usually four, begins with a 4.4 or 4.5, and it specifically goes down and breaks it into a more distinct by carrying out to the sixth digit.
Okay. So, and again, if you're not the person who knows this, please tell me. So if I had a gas station and I sold tobacco products, pipes, whatever else you could consider, the issue of this case, would they have a different NACs code? Would they grant a different permit? Would they consider different?
They would have a different NACs code, yes, sir.
So if I was to go into, so how would I know specifically what prohibited items exist if I wouldn't know what's included in my NACs code or my retail designation?
Well, the first thing, whenever we get a location review, if we see anything that's not going to be allowed under our zoning ordinance, we let the person that submits the applications know.
So what items specifically not allowed under the zoning ordinance under the NACs code grant for this business?
Well, the zoning ordinance is something totally different than the NACs code. So you have to abide by the zoning ordinance as well as the business license ordinance.
The zoning ordinance would be like commercial, real, whatever that would be correct, or what kind of items could be sold, or what kind of level of establishment. What in the actual documents provided to this company would have said what items are not allowed versus the gas station right next door?
We do not provide a specific list.
Okay. So is it kind of, gotcha, you didn't know you couldn't...
No, sir. We notified the gentleman of things that were not allowed.
Who was the gentleman?
It was in the emails that Tori had.
Okay. So you all meet with him? Did you go specifically through items? Did you say this one item is allowed, this one item not be allowed?
Mr. Hanson denied his original request.
Again, did someone go and say, you can sell this kind of smoking device, but you can't sell this kind of smoking device? I mean, that's just, if you don't know, once again, I'll ask someone else who might have been able to...
I'm trying to answer you, sir, and we are a department that works all together. Tori deals on the zoning side, then I look at the business... Tori deals on the zoning side, then I look at the business license side, and I did not license them as a convenience store.
Okay. They were licensed as a retail establishment?
There are many retail establishments. Would you like for me to look up the NACs code so I can tell you the exact code?
No problem. Go right ahead. It's got the NACs code on it?
Here it is, right here, Cliff. And I will ask, if you are up and you are testifying, please speak into the microphone. We've got people at home trying to listen in, cannot hear what you're saying. So please speak up to the microphone.
Based on the NACs code, it is an other miscellaneous store retailer.
And again, within that, it doesn't specifically list items that would be outside, that they would be excluded from being able to sell and operate within, correct?
We do not list anything that is excluded.
Okay. So you both mentioned an ordinance. What item specifically is an ordinance violation are we concerned about here? I just want to make sure as we go down the line, we state key regards the items which are an ordinance violation.
I believe that's going to be best addressed by John Hanson.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that'll be abundantly clear in just a minute.
Thank you.
Senator Burden, I called John Hanson.
Yes, sir, Mr. Hanson. I know you were outside. Please, if you would, speak up so the people at home can hear you.
Mr. Hanson, what is your position with the town?
I'm the Director of Planning, Building and Technology.
And you would be...
I'm the zoning administrator.
You would be sawing this... Please, I'd also...
Yes.
Now, were you brought into the case that we're here tonight about?
Yes, sir.
And what was your involvement?
When Ms. Bassett had her initial discussions with Mr. Alcide, she, as she already mentioned, she had her email conversations back and forth. She, I'm sorry, she brought it to my attention. And we looked into it, looked at the ordinance, the ordinance that Mr. Stiteley is referring to as the ordinance 2014-13, which sets up a zoning designation for this type of establishment. So I did a little initial research when I received the application, looked at one of the other stores that Mr. Alcide has in Conway, sent him some pictures from that store that I took off their Facebook page, and initially denied the application. Sent him an email and said I was going to deny the application because the type of products that he was selling in Conway was not consistent with the zoning classification where this particular location is. The ordinance that you all passed in 2014 requires smoke and tobacco shops to be located in industrial zones, which this particular area is not. So I initially denied the application and sent him an email, and he came back with a response that he understood that and that those items were legal in Conway, were legal to sell in Conway, and he would not be selling that in Lexington.
And did anybody from your department ever convey to him that he would not be able to sell the pipes and other items that were not permitted in the location?
Ms. Bassett sent him a copy of the email, a copy of the ordinance. I sent him a copy of photographs of the types of material. I initially denied the application. And based on his assurances that he understood that and he knew he wasn't able to sell that, we went ahead and moved forward and allowed him to open his business.
Did it ever come to your attention that Mr. Alcide was not abiding by that? Bring my own instructions.
When Ms. Lee received the complaint that she did, she came and spoke to me about it. We turned it over to the police department for further investigation.
At some point, based on the investigation of the police, he wasn't being licensed until the point?
After the police department did their investigation, provided the information that they were, that they identified about the activities that were going on at the location, we conferred with the town administrator, town attorney, business license official, and moved to suspend the license.
Answer any questions, Mr. Stiteley.
Mr. Hanson, you said that the smoke shops under the 2014 ordinance, what is a smoke shop defined as under the town ordinance that we're discussing?
The ordinance says, "A drug and tobacco establishment means any premises where drug and tobacco paraphernalia is displayed for sale, offered for sale, or sold, and which devotes more than a two-foot by four-foot, two feet in-depth section of shelf space for drug and tobacco paraphernalia. Items included in this definition are listed in the town's drug paraphernalia ordinance."
Okay. And it specifically says they have to be... Displayed for sale, correct?
Yes.
If you open the storefront, you would have to actually see the items available for sale, correct?
Yes.
So if you get in that situation, if a customer hadn't specifically asked for an item that was not on display, and it was behind a closed door, which was not outside your cabinet requirements, displayed for sale, would that be a violation of that specific ordinance?
We're not discussing hypotheticals. We're discussing this particular case.
Okay. In a situation where you cannot see an item for sale, open on display, that's outside that ordinance?
If we received an application where it indicated that these items were being displayed, we would deny the, or being sold, we would deny the application, and the applicant would have the right to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Now playing with semantics, the ordinance says "display", and you did pass their license, correct?
I passed their license based on assurances from the applicant that they understood what could and could not be sold and what they were going to sell at that store.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Senator, I'd like to call Lewis P.S. How's P.S. doing with the license, please, partner?
Yes, ma'am.
And what are you doing with your partner?
I am currently assigned to SOD Division. I'm the school resource officer for Rutherford High School.
Did you ever have contact with the Rutherford students and maybe stop off?
Yes, I did.
And still, would you also work that contact or...
We had noticed, myself and another school resource officer that works with me, Officer Hare, we had noticed a couple of days prior to us actually making contact with him, his vehicle driving erratically on campus. The parking attendant for the school was actually able to locate that vehicle. And upon locating the vehicle to get the tag, so we could find out who the registered owner was, he discovered a knife sitting in plain view in the vehicle, at which time he notified an administrator, which was Jacob Smith. Jacob Smith contacted the student, which was Mr. Rogers. Once he contacted him, he wanted to go to his vehicle. At that time, Mr. Smith contacted myself and Officer Hare to escort him to the vehicle in case, for his safety and in case anything may happen. We get there, and the vehicle is parked in the student parking lot. There's a knife in plain view. They asked Mr. Rogers about it. He said, "Yeah, it was mine." He forgot he had left it in the vehicle. At that time, he went into the vehicle, retrieved the knife, and at that time, we had probable cause to search the vehicle because you're not allowed to have a weapon anywhere on campus. Upon opening the side door, or the driver's door, there was a heavy odor of marijuana coming from the vehicle along with fragrance. And my first comment to Mr. Rogers was, when I asked him, I said, "Where is it and how much do you have?" And he said it was in the trunk. At that time, I searched the trunk and found a container holding the green leafy substance, believed to be marijuana. It was in a clear bag. One side of the bag was clear. The other side of the bag had a design. It was called Blue Dream. I also found a two-foot-long glass bomb in the trunk of the vehicle. At that time, he was escorted back into the school, and he was given citations for simple possession of marijuana and drug paraphernalia.
Oh, did you ever ask him where he got the marijuana from?
Yes. Once we brought him back into the office and the administrators had finished talking with him, he was given his marijuana warnings and asked him where he obtained the Blue Dream. He said he obtained it from a vape place in the Walmart Shopping Center on Sunset Boulevard.
If you opened that with the green leafy substance that was in the vehicle, did you send it somewhere for testing?
It was submitted into evidence, and I believe it was sent off to SLED, to be exact.
Answer any questions?
Yes.
How was the item packaged?
It was in a clear, the bag itself, on one side was clear, so you could see right into the bag. And then the other side had a design. I think it was blue and black, and it said "Blue Dream" on it.
Okay, but it was like a commercial packaging?
Yes.
Not like a handmade, someone just threw it in a bag?
No.
All right, not really. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Thank you, Mr. Diaz. William Scott Rogers, and Senator, while he's coming up, I'd like to make a statement to the council. This is a young man that was mentioned in Officer Diaz's testimony. He's here to testify as to where he got, he bought the marijuana. And he's here with his parents, and he's also here with his attorney. And I would also say for the record that I have made no contact with William Rogers until 6:30 this afternoon. My entire contact with him as a young man has been with his attorney.
Very good, thank you. Welcome. Thank you. If you would, please speak up so we can hear you in the microphone.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Williams, I have a couple of questions. Are you the William Scott Rogers and Officer Diaz?
Yes, sir.
And did you have marijuana in your car at that?
Yes, sir.
Where did you buy that marijuana?
The vape shop in Walmart Shopping Center, like I mentioned.
Answer any questions, Mr. Rogers.
Mr. Rogers, were you aware it was marijuana or did you believe it to be Delta 8 products, which are technically legal in South Carolina?
I was aware that it was Delta 8, and I did believe that it was legal.
So it was sold to you as a manufactured product in a packaging, correct?
Yes, sir.
Wasn't like something out of dude's pocket or socks?
No, sir.
And it was represented as a Delta 8 product with a manufacturer's label, including all the documentation, correct?
Yes, sir.
Your understanding was it was a legal substance in South Carolina?
Yes, sir.
Because Delta 8 technically is a legal substance in South Carolina.
As our council is testifying, now also, we're not here to try Mr. Scott for any crime. We're only here to determine where he got the substance that Officer Diaz found.
Very good, thank you.
Part of the matter is what was being sold. And as Mr. Coon pointed out multiple times, this is an actual criminal hearing, and I don't think the same rules of evidence apply.
We have a SLED agent here that will testify as to what it was.
Yes, sir. Move on, please.
What did you think it was?
I thought it was Delta 8.
It doesn't matter what he thought it was.
Very good.
It matters is what it was.
Thank you. Anything further?
What was it represented as?
You can go around, you can frame it 14 different ways, but you need to move on.
Purchased it, paid sales tax for it?
Yes.
Sales tax likely by the town of Lexington?
I believe so.
All right, perfect.
Very good, thank you.
Senator Burden, and we would like to ask you to stop there. Very, 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 very.
I just want to tell that young man, thank you for being brave enough to do that. It took some will. Mom and dad, you've done a good job with him. Nice job.
Senator, I would like to call Johnson Taylor.
Senator, what are you doing for me?
With the Lexington Police Department.
And were you involved in the...
That's correct.
Were you involved?
We conducted several controlled purchases of paraphernalia as well as hemp from the store. Smokers Tobacco and Vape, located at 5570 Sunset Boulevard, Suite C.
You heard young Mr. Scott say that you're involved in the vape shop in Walmart. Is that the same shop?
Yes, sir.
Now, how did you get involved in investigating that shop?
I was notified by my chief of police about a possible issue with paraphernalia being sold openly in the store.
So, armed with that information, what if anything...
On January 21st, we went to 5570 Sunset Boulevard, Suite C, which is smokers tobacco and vape. Upon entry, I made contact with Mr. Abdul Alcide, introduced himself as Abe. I located numerous smoking products, commonly used as smoking marijuana, that were displayed by the register. Mr. Alcide also stated that he had hemp flower. I saw where that was openly sold behind the shelves, so I made a purchase of hemp flower as well as a glass smoking device from his business.
And did you have that tested?
That's correct. It was placed into a SLED best kit and also into the evidence.
You said SLED?
That's correct.
And did you receive the report back?
I did.
And what was in the report?
The report stated that the substance that was being sold as hemp tested positive for marijuana.
Now, any other law?
That's correct. We made another purchase of a product that was labeled "Blue Dream", and that was done on the... So we made another purchase of Applejack hemp flower on the 27th of January as well, which was made for Mr. Alcide.
And what did you do with that?
It was also placed in the evidence. The Blue Dream was located during the execution of a search warrant at that business.
And did you send any of that material to the evidence?
Yes, sir. The search warrant we did at the business was on February 1st, and we collected numerous Blue Dream packages. Those were also sent off to SLED in a best kit and it tested positive for marijuana.
Here, would you ask the victim to bring out the evidence for use? Senator, I would like to interrupt this testimony. Basically, you have identified the evidence and also talked about change.
That's the stuff you've covered, you've created that.
All right, Senator, if I can interrupt Detective Taylor's testimony and ask Detective Hobbs a few questions.
Yes, sir.
Detective Hobbs, who are you with?
Down at Lexington Police Department.
And what was your involvement in this case?
I, when we conducted the search warrant, I oversaw the collection of the evidence and the items that we took.
All right, you just rolled two carts of material out here, would you identify that for the counsel, please?
Yes, sir. It is 10 boxes labeled and identified with the evidence labels. They contain various pipes, glass pipes, smoking masks, and small glass pipes.
Now, what else is in those boxes?
Uh, no, sir.
Where do those boxes come from?
Our evidence room.
Originally, where did they come from?
They came from smokers vape shop.
Now, these have been in evidence since Detective Taylor put them in evidence, is that right?
That's correct.
Are you, are you one of the evidence custodians of the county?
That is correct, yes, sir.
All right, now, did I ask you to examine this evidence and make sure it is the same evidence that was put in the evidence by Officer Taylor and I think also by Officer Diaz and also Detective Keith?
Yes, sir.
And did you, did you examine that for me?
Yes, sir.
And have you determined whether or not any of these items have been tampered with, changed, or substituted, added to, or deducted from the evidence that was put into the evidence?
None of them have, sir.
All right, now, have you checked it out with evidence today personally?
That is correct.
And where's it been that you checked it out?
It has been, it was driven here and I unloaded it into the vestibule right here.
Have you been in that room with it ever since you put it in?
That is correct.
Has anybody went in, gone in there and tampered with it?
No, sir.
Did they have you in the same?
Yes, sir.
Senator, what I'd like to do is offer this material into evidence with the stipulation that it can be returned to evidence after the hearing, because it may be used in any future criminal action that might be, might be problematic.
Yes, sir.
With that stipulation, I'd like to offer it as Exhibit Number Two. If you could just give me the entire... I won't put it on this box. It has four of them, two for me on it. And I'd like to put the entire stack to be Exhibit, or Exhibit One, Exhibit Two.
Exhibit Two.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Coon, do you plan on leaving it right there?
Oh, if it's in your way, we can put it back in the evidence room.
I just don't want these two gentlemen to be blocked. I'd like them, if we can lower it at least, maybe one box down. Yes, sir, just a minute, hold that door, Mr. Hobbs is coming.
Do you have any questions? Just clarifying, he was the one collecting the heat seal. You weren't there for the collection, correct?
I was there for the collection, but I oversaw it. I didn't actually collect it physically.
And, Senator, I don't have anything else, I'll ask if he can excuse, so he can continue to look for the evidence.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
All right, if we can, Officer Taylor, back up. Officer Taylor, now, I understand there have been no criminal charges against Mr. Rasadi, who owns the store, is that right?
No, he's got two pending distribution charges.
All right, what about the managers?
Sorry, Mr. Abdul Ramana Rasadi has two pending distribution charges.
Right. That's all I have.
Thank you.
When you first came up, you said you bought a bunch of hemp flower. Was there more stuff than the two reports that you sent over to SLED?
No, my first, my first time making entry in the store, I made, I purchased one package of hemp flower, labeled Applejack.
All right, that one tested?
That's correct, tested positive for marijuana.
Okay, did you have to purchase anything else that was outside of that, the Applejack kind?
No, all we purchased from the store was Applejack.
Okay. You were there when they collected those items we just saw?
That's correct.
Where were they located?
All throughout the store. The glass smoking devices, better known as bowls, were located right there on the front display.
Okay, how large was the cabinet?
It was, I don't know the dimensions of it, but pretty large counter.
Okay, and the other items, were they clearly displayed as you walked in the store?
There were several items that were in a, in a back room in the store.
Okay, not on display as you walked in?
There were, like I said, there were some items that were on display, which were the bowls.
Okay, the item you purchased, do we have, do you have a picture of the Applejack? I'm guessing it's somewhere.
It's in Exhibit Two, we can go pull some for you if you want to.
I just want to see the actual packaging.
That's fine. You want to see the Blue Dream?
I just, the Applejack should be fine.
Senator, if you can pull the Applejack out of the drawer.
Right. I don't want to have to mess with the best kid, Detective.
No, we're not going to mess with the best kid, I'll be fine. This is the Applejack that was purchased, tested from SLED.
Just put it down if you can. And that's in the exhibits that they'll be able to look at?
That's correct, we've got another, another view of if you want to see that.
Yeah, that'd be great. I have a printout here from premium Delta VIII infused hemp flower, Applejack manufacturer. I was wondering, does it look like the same one on the printout from the manufacturer's website?
I can't affirmably say, but it does look very similar.
I mean, it has the exact same logos, it's got QV, QVC, QRC.
Tell me.
A little coating thing, and it's, it's definitely a manufactured product, that's not something someone put together in their basement.
No, it appears to be manufactured.
Okay, it actually, in fact, it actually has the label, or on it, has the label of where it was manufactured, what company sold it, what company that produced it, correct?
It's located on the front. Looks like it's concentrated concepts, I believe.
Okay, and it, I would like y'all to take a look at it, it is clearly something that was made in retail, for retail, correct? Would you agree, I mean?
It's, it's made for retail.
And on it, does it advertise that it is in fact Delta VIII hemp flower?
That's correct, says Delta VIII flower.
Does it say marijuana, correct?
No, it does not.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yes.
Detective Keith?
Yes, sir.
Are you a licensed police department?
I am, sir.
And what is your profession?
I'm a detective.
Were you involved in that case?
Yes, sir.
What was your involvement?
I did an undercover buy and I was also there for the execution of the search warrant.
When was the undercover buy?
It was on January 21st of this year, sir.
And what did you think that you buy on January 1st?
I, like I said, I went in undercover capacity and I ended up purchasing a package of hemp flower with Applejacks, and then I also went into the closed room and bought a smoking apparatus or smoking mask.
Smoking mask?
Yes, sir.
No doubt about a smoking mask.
It is a, it's kind of like what it says, it's a mask and it has a plastic, I believe it's plastic, like tube to a smaller bong, and so you can put the Applejack inside of it and smoke it with your mask on. And that was actually by recommendation by Mr. Al.
Now, did you have that area of evidence?
No, no, sir.
Was it tested?
No, sir, we did not test that one because we tested the first buy and I believe we tested the third buy, so we didn't see the point in testing that one.
All right, let's talk about the third one.
Yes, sir, that would have been Detective Taylor that made that buy.
All right, he's already tested that one.
Yes, sir.
Come on, we'll have you bring it up.
All right, so you testified about smoking masks, they're kind of like, and I'm going to provide this packet of all this information with my turn, like these ones you can buy on Amazon, correct? I mean, they look just like these things you can buy on Amazon?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, and once again, you saw the Delta VIII, the, excuse me, Applejacks?
Yes, sir.
Looked very similar to what the manufacturer advertised on its website as being Delta VIII Applejacks?
Yes, sir, it looks similar.
And actually, the other one, I was even noticing, about the same manufacturer, it's called Blue Dream, correct?
Yes, sir.
They also, same idea, same kind of packaging, made for commercial retail, as far as you can tell.
Yes, as far as I can tell.
Thank you.
And I'd like to call, thank you. Little mask throw here. Our next witness from the, Dr. Robinson, can you assist me, please? Dr. Robinson, would you tell the counsel where you work and what you do?
Yes, sir, I work for the South Carolina Law Enforcement Division, commonly known as SLED. I've been with the Drug Analysis Department for right at 13 years and currently are the team leader of the Marijuana THC Quantitation Team.
Would you give the counsel a little bit of your training history?
I have a Bachelor of Science in Chemistry from University of South Carolina. Spent approximately three years doing environmental chemistry work right after graduation. On coming to SLED, I received law and legal training from the South Carolina Criminal Justice Academy, as well as in-house training on the analysis of controlled substances through the department.
Now, you've been here throughout the testimony.
That's correct.
And you're familiar with the material that was collected by Detective Taylor and Detective Keith, and was sent to your agency?
I've reviewed the two reports I issued in reference to this case, yes.
And you have copies of your reports with you?
I do.
All right, with your hand in this, sir. Now, did you, at SLED, when items like this are sent to SLED, do you keep a chain of custody?
We generate an in-house chain of custody electronically. It starts when the evidence comes in, when a case is created, and it follows the movement of the evidence throughout the analysis.
And do you have a chain of custody?
I do not have a copy of the chain of custody with me, no.
Senator, I've got that on my phone, would the counsel like to see it? Y'all hear that?
Yes.
All right, so, I want to ask you, in here in the downtown company, you have a counsel that's typically, that would offer his reports as Exhibits Three and Four.
Very good.
Dr. Robinson, I'm going to hand you your reports back, and I will ask you to tell the counsel what it is that your analysis uncovered with this material.
As referenced earlier, we had two different submissions on this case. The first submission had a single packet containing plant material. The results there were marijuana C1 found in the sample tested, one tested, net weight 7.53 grams, 0.2658 ounces, total Delta IX tetrahydrocannabinol present dry weight, 0.78 plus or minus 0.22 percent. That was the first packet.
All right, what does that mean, Kim?
Well, with, in terms of marijuana analysis, marijuana and hemp are essentially the same plant. The industrial hemp bill that South Carolina Legislature put forward a few years ago defined industrial hemp as the cannabis plant with a Delta IX THC concentration up to 0.3 percent. So legally speaking, if cannabis tests at or below 0.3 percent for Delta IX THC, it is industrial hemp. Anything above that 0.3 percentage is legally classified as marijuana.
All right, just to be clear, what were the percentages that you found in these two samples?
Well, for this particular sample, for this submission, this value was 0.78 plus or minus 0.22 percent. That's just for the first submission.
You know, that case, marijuana?
That's legally classified as marijuana, yes.
All right, what about the other submission?
The second submission, which is actually marked as State Exhibit Number Three, so I'm looking at these in reverse order.
Okay.
Item 1.1 was a Heat Seal pouch marked Item Two, containing a Ziploc bag containing plant material. Analysis was not performed on this item. Item 1.2 was a Heat Seal pouch marked Item Three, containing a Ziploc bag containing plant material. The result was marijuana C1 found in the sample tested, one tested, net weight 24.35 grams, 0.8595 ounces, total Delta IX tetrahydrocannabinol percent dry weight greater than 1 percent, which is a common cutoff we use in testing. Item 1.3 was a plastic pouch labeled Blue Dream, premium cannabis D8 flower, THC D8 23.80 percent, containing plant material. The result was marijuana C1 found in the sample tested, one tested, net weight 7.31 grams, 0.2580 ounces, total Delta IX tetrahydrocannabinol percent dry weight greater than 1 percent.
Does that indicate marijuana?
Both of these are classified as marijuana, yes.
That's all I have, if you have any questions, turn around.
Investigator, this is kind of a hot topic because they changed all this with that 2014 bill, and then 2018, when they went back and threw out a load gun, it was more than dry weight, they created a whole other marijuana testing standard, correct?
Well, 2017 and 18 was really the changeover. Prior to that date, anything that was cannabis was legally marijuana. They carved out a section of cannabis to label as industrial hemp.
And then what they did at SLED is they made you guys kind of change the testing protocol to go back to the dry weight to make the determination as the amount present rather than just saying cannabis.
Well, prior to this, there was no concentration for THC being performed. It was simply a question of is this cannabis, is this not? Methodology was created to identify a concentration of THC.
What is Delta Eight? And I know you're dealing with this a lot, so what is Delta Eight?
So, if I may, THC is the psychoactive compound primarily in marijuana, but there are different structural positional isomers of THC. So if you were to take THC and then move it here, we have a different structural isomer. We're moving around a functional group on a centerpiece of a molecular compound. Delta Nine is in one position, Delta Eight is in another position.
As far as South Carolina law goes, do we make a distinction between Delta Eight and Delta Nine when you're allowed to call it marijuana versus hemp, cannabis, or whatever?
The testing criteria we use look solely at Delta Nine THC.
Is Delta Eight illegal in South Carolina? If you have a product that you test that comes back as Delta Eight, is that illegal in South Carolina?
Well, THC generically is listed as a C1-controlled substance in South Carolina with no positional isomers included. So I'll leave that to the lawyers to argue the point, but in South Carolina law, it specifically only says tetrahydrocannabinol, not Delta Eight, not Delta Nine, just tetrahydrocannabinol. Delta Nine has been specifically removed at 0.3 and below. Delta Eight is scheduled federally as a C1, but not specifically in South Carolina by name D8.
Are you getting a lot of these testing cases with these eight shop products? I guess would be the best way to call them.
Obviously, this is, we're seeing quite a few from...
The items you tested, and actually, there is a distinction. You tested some good old-fashioned marijuana. This item 1.2 was good old-fashioned.
Item 1.2 came back with a significantly higher concentration than 1.3. However, for reporting purposes, as I kind of alluded to, we have a cutoff of 1% that we report.
And not specific to this, but there was allegedly some old-fashioned marijuana taken off of the individual who was arrested that was not the product that was sold in the store. It was included in the basket and you could tell the difference because on yours, the ones that you tested that appeared to be from the shop came in packaging indicating what it alleged to be.
That's correct.
Okay. So aside from what was purchased in the shop, those would have been the ones that you had as on your, what you call that?
Well, I, so when we do it in the lab, if we don't have to differentiate packaging for clarity purposes, we don't get real specific. If you heard the second report, it was very specific to the packaging labeling. The first one was not. That's simply because we only had a single packet.
Sure.
If we want to get into the details, the control number on there is how we would track that. So I dare say that would be the Apple Jack that we're referring to.
That was the one that was the .78 with the .22 margin of error?
Uh, if I could, yes.
Sorry, not trying to?
No, I get it. Yes, 0.78 plus or minus 0.22. That's the uncertainty we have on that one.
And that's your bell curve margin of error?
That is based on the instruments we use, as well as the processes to generate an in-house measurement of uncertainty.
Do you test these items for the Delta Eight at all?
We can see Delta Eight, we do not quantitate Delta Eight because it's not listed in the law with regards to hemp versus marijuana. Delta Eight's not referenced, only Delta Nine.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Certainly.
Robinson, you hear one of the gentlemen, where you bought the old-fashioned marijuana?
Um, I wasn't clear, yeah, I don't have anything to...
Did you hear, you bought it?
Again, I don't want to comment on someone else's testimony. Yep. Yep.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Go, Scotty, far? Excuse Mr. Robinson?
Yes, thank you very much.
Long time tonight.
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Robinson, you're with the Lexington, Town License?
Yes, sir.
In what capacity?
I'm the Finance Director and the Technical Business License Official.
And in your capacity as Business License Official, were you asked to do anything in regard to the investigation of the residence of your town?
I was asked to sign the letter to revoke the license.
I'm gonna hand you the document and ask you to think of that.
This is the letter I signed that revoked the license.
And after you signed the letter, what did you do with it?
I handed it to John Hanson and he gave a copy to Walt to hand deliver and then did a certified mailing of a copy.
So it was sent to Mr. Al Sadi by certified mail. What's the date on that?
February 2nd, 2021.
And Mr. Walt Blackmore also hand delivered the same letter?
Correct.
And on that, you got a what day did you get that?
I do not know.
I would like to offer this, this is the revocation letter. Mayor, I'd like to offer this as my next exhibit.
Thank you.
Would you ask any questions, Mr. Johnson?
Sure.
So you finance up to the town, right?
Correct.
Did the town collect tax money from the sale of these manufactured products from this establishment?
No.
Did it pay sales tax?
Sales tax don't come to the town.
Okay. How does that additional service tax, if one penny on every item sold in state?
County does, town does.
You want to recall Walt Blackmore?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Blackmore, you work for Town License?
I do.
In what capacity?
Business licensing, I work for John Hanson.
If I could retrieve that last exhibit?
That would be Exhibit Five.
Can you exhibit five and ask you what is anything you did with the original letter?
Uh, excuse me, I don't know if this is the exact letter because the letter I delivered was sealed in a town envelope, but I delivered a letter to Mr. Al Sadi, who was the only person in the store on February 2nd of this year at approximately 3:15 PM.
This is nothing, sorry.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, the town res?
Thank you very much, Mr. Coon. At this point, for clarification purposes, Mr. Cunningham, Section 99.04, specifically in the town ordinances, says what, please?
Case 99.04, unless the context shall clearly indicate some other meaning, the terms defined in this section shall for all purposes, the article, uh, the documents here in reference have the meanings here unspecified. We'll get definitions, so be equally applicable to both the singular and plural forms of any herein defined. Synthetic marijuana means THC H2-10 cannabicyclohexanol JVH 073 and first, all chemical compounds intended to replicate, mimic, or cause a similar reaction to the effects of marijuana or cannabis. Such compounds are known as or marketed under many names, including but not limited to THC H2-2IO, that word I just said, cannabicyclohexanol JWH 073, potpourri spice K2 glaze, herbal incense, herbal smoking blends, and other names. That's your definition and the ordinance that you asked me about says that advertisement, sale, distribution, possession, and/or usage of synthetic marijuana are hereby prohibited within the town of Lexington.
Very good, thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Seidler.
Just briefly to clarify, I guess kind of on that point, and the detective, sorry, the investigator from SLED kind of said, it's not synthetic, this is an actually naturally occurring hemp substance that utilizes a different base. I printed out a couple items and I'm just gonna offer them and then I'll just kind of make a brief statement about my client. I don't think we're refuting what items were sold there, that's what was sold there. What I have, and I'll give you a copy too, Cliff, before my client went to do these products, and I'll tell you, for the edification of the council, they have like almost 20 stores across the southeast. Every product before they sell it, they have it tested at an independent lab that says, with a certification, this... There's no specific, you even said I could present my case, you didn't say I had to do it by way of a witness, you simply said I could offer it as an exhibit, the rules of evidence don't apply. I'm gonna hand the documents up and they can put whatever value they choose to them.
Yes, sir, so if you would summarize.
Sure, okay. I'm gonna hand up a packet. Every item that they get, they have tested at this company and it says, this is what you're buying. I've included a copy of what is from the manufacturer of the item, going through all of their legal disclaimers. It actually covers both the products that were uncovered. And once again, the refute is not that these items are being sold, it's akin to the argument that if you're selling packets of Sweet' Low that tell you they're Sweet' Low, but they're really saccharine and saccharine's against the law, but you bought them from a manufacturer, you paid taxes on them, you did everything you were supposed to do as far as what they indicate the product is, including having it independently tested, you're doing what you want. My client is willing to stop selling any of the hemp products if you want him to. He will strictly stick to tobacco, which he had high-end tobacco in the store, he had high-end cigars, he had all the vape products that are sold at the place two doors down from him. He's okay to stop selling the... My point is, and I've included it, also on the back page here is as far as the masks they kept referencing, and you could check it yourself, you go to Amazon, you could buy it, have it to your door within 12 hours. So there's nothing in here specifically and they're the exact ones that were taken. But I did print out the package just so you could take a look at them. I don't know if you want one or multiple packets.
Karen, you want to grab this?
And I guess that's just our point, Judge, or Counsel, they, he invested $120,000 in the storefront. If they knew what was, they could have came out the first day and take a look at his shop and said, this is a go, this is a no-go. There wasn't a situation where they were hiding and swapping packets, saying, no, no, this is the stuff you really want. What was advertised was what was sold, what was purchased. I've included at least the documentation so you could see it. The last thing I'll point out, and I know we're here in Lexington, the biggest CBD shop in the state has a giant stop in Harden Street that sells the exact same stuff on their website. It's not unique to Mr. Al Sadi's business. Literally, all those stores you're seeing as you drive down 378 are selling the exact same product. It's not synthetic marijuana, it's federally allowable. South Carolina, at this point, hasn't made the Delta Nine, which is actual cannabis, illegal. They might do that in the future, I think there actually might be a bill up there now about it, but it hasn't been done yet and it's what every single store is selling. There wasn't a misrepresentation about what was being sold. There may be a misunderstanding on interpretation of what was in it, but they bought it from a licensed manufacturer in retail packaging. It wasn't a side of the road, you know, here's some stuff out of my sock. They were selling retail goods. He's willing to not sell them, he will go strictly to flat tobacco, vape products, and cigars. Like I said, he invested a lot of money in the town, he was, they weren't hiding what they were doing, they were in plain sight, this wasn't a shady backdoor establishment, they're in the Walmart parking lot. They weren't trying to hide from anyone. If there was an error in some of the stuff that were sold, I've at least presented the documentation from the manufacturer, says this is what it was. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
I'm ready.
Yes, sir, Mr. Coon.
He wants you to let him off and he'll agree not to do it again. But the very first witness that we produced, or basically, he agreed with her at the very beginning that he wouldn't do that.
Right.
So how can we trust him now?
Very good. Is that it, Mr. Coon?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is that it, Mr. Seidler?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Cornes.
I make a motion, we convene in executive session.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cornes makes a motion that we go back into executive session, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Williams, second's that motion, all is a favor, please raise your right hand. We'll be in recess.
Mr. Mayor, on the record, I think, were you asking me to accompany you?
Yes, sir, please. Or legal advice, Mr. Cunningham? Very good, we are back out, do I have a motion to adjourn executive session?
So moved.
Mr. Williams makes a motion, Ms. Manis seconds the motion, all is a favor, please raise your right hand. We are out of executive session, we have one item to report out of executive session. At this time, I will make a motion that the town of Lexington revoke the business license issued to smokers, tobacco, and vape DBA Smoke O's Tobacco and Vape located at 5570 Sunset Boulevard, Suite C, based upon the following findings. One, there is sufficient evidence to conclude by a preponderance of the evidence that illegal activity has occurred at this business location and this activity was directly related to the business operations. And, two, there is sufficient evidence to show that by a preponderance of the evidence that the applicant has breached a condition upon which the business license was granted and that this activity occurred on the business premises and was directly related to the business operations. This motion was approved by a majority vote. As soon as we take it, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Livingston seconds the motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is a favor, please raise your right hand. That is a unanimous decision. This motion was approved by majority vote at a regular town council meeting dated March 1st, 2021. I will sign it into, right after this meeting. That concludes our business for this evening. Are there any comments from the news media? Anybody here from the news media?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Cunningham?
I have a question for you, so that you may get it on the record.
Yes, sir.
Was there a vote taken in executive session?
There was no vote taken in executive session, thank you. At this time, we'll hear announcements from Mayor Protam.
Yes, sir, before Councilman Williams makes his announcements, I would like to wish him a happy birthday on March the 6th from the mayor and council. I would also like to make another very special announcement for Ron and Catherine Williams. They welcomed a brand-new granddaughter, Brooklyn Elena Pickett, was born February the 20th and weighed in at nine pounds and five ounces. Congratulations to y'all, coming into the greatest club in the world of being grandparents.
Thank you, thank you. I believe my wife's trying to catch up with you and Ms. Manis.
She got a long way to go with me because I got 10.
She got a long way to go with me.
Mayor, since we've kept staff here a long time, any unnecessary, ma'am, make a motion that any unnecessary staff can go ahead and leave.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All you guys from PD, we appreciate y'all staying late and town staff that stayed late.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, because I have three pages of announcements here, guys, just bear with me, I know it's late. Thank you to Mayor McDougal for delivering the state of town address tonight. The video gives citizens a great overview of all the projects going on in Lexington. If anyone has questions about specific projects, please contact council or staff and we will be glad to answer any questions. We would like to also thank everyone for coming out to the 2021 Lexington County Chili Cookoff that was on February 21st. A big thank you to our co-hosts, The Old Mill Brew Pub and the Lexington Blowfish Baseball. It was a great first event at the Ice House Amphitheater. I know everyone will be excited to hear more events are coming back to the Ice House Amphitheater. Some of these great events include the town of Lexington and Lexington County Recreation Agency Commission will host a free movie, Frozen Two, at the Ice House Amphitheater on Friday night, March 12th, starting at 6:00 PM. The movie is rated PG. On Saturday, March 13th, come out and enjoy the St. Patrick's Day Parade at 2:00 on Main Street. I will be out of town visiting my granddaughter for the first time. The parade is hosted by the Lexington County Blowfish Baseball Team. After the parade, the town will host a free St. Pat's Shamrockin concert at the Ice House Amphitheater at 3:00. Amphitheater at 3:30. The concert will feature the Celtic folk rock band, Fire.
Celtic.
On March 19th, the Town of Lexington and the Lexington County Recreation Agent Commission will host another free movie, Playing With Fire, at the Ice House Amphitheater starting at 8:00 PM. This will be a perfect kickoff for the event the next day. Saturday, March 20th, the Lexington Firefighter Spring Festival will be held at the Ice House Amphitheater and the Pavilion from 2:00 to 7:00, featuring Tokyo Joe. This, the event's free, but donations will be accepted, plus food, beer, and wine will be available for purchase, with all proceeds benefiting the Jeff Chavis House. We are very happy to announce the return of Lexington live free concerts on Thursdays at 6:30 at the Ice House Amphitheater, starting on April the 8th, with the Finesse Band. April 15th will be Band of Oz, April 22nd will be the Reggie Sullivan Band. Go ahead and mark your calendars for the 2021 Town of Lexington Wine Walk. It's back on May 8th at the Ice House Amphitheater and Pavilion, starting at 6:00 PM. This is a 21-year-old and up event, and you will need to show ID. Tickets are $25 in advance or $35 the week of, and can be purchased starting April the 1st on the town's Ice House Amphitheater webpage. We can't wait to hold this year's Market at Ice House, which will be held at the new Ice House Pavilion. No more tents in the parking lot. The market will be every Saturday starting May the 22nd and run through September 25th, with the exception of July 3rd. If you're interested in being a vendor at the market, please go to theicehouseamphitheater.com to sign up. Please stay posted on all these events and more on the Ice House Amphitheater Facebook page as well. Now, back to some business. Council will meet again on March 15th at 6:00 PM for council's work session. The Planning Commission will meet March 17th at 8:00 AM here in the council chambers. Town Hall will be closed for a holiday on April the 2nd, an observance of Good Friday. And last but not least, this week, March 1st through 7th, is National Invest in Veterans Week. This special week was founded in 2019 with the objective to empower the public to invest in the veteran population through veteran-owned businesses, educational development, and mental health empowerment. Based on reports from the Small Business Administration, veterans only represent 9.1% of all US businesses, yet they employ 5.8 million people. They have an annual payroll of $195 billion and receipts of $1.14 trillion. They truly make an economic impact. The South Carolina General Assembly presented a resolution to the Lexington Chamber for their support in supporting the Invest in Veterans Week. The chamber will highlight veteran-owned businesses this week on social media, plus you can nominate a veteran-owned business to be highlighted by visiting their webpage at lexingtonsc.org. We encourage citizens in Lexington to support our veterans and thank them for their community involvement and for their service to our country. I'll start Invest in Veterans Week by thanking Councilmember Tyler Law for his service to our country and for the impact he makes in our community. On behalf of the mayor and fellow town council members, we would like to thank you for watching our council in action tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add?
Mr. Mayor, real quick.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cornes.
Hottest ticket in town this week is tomorrow night with River Bluff Gators basketball team taking on Dutch Fork for lower state finals. So, go Gators tomorrow night, actually playing at Lexington High School.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Very good, are there any questions from the public or staff tonight? Very good, that concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching the town council meeting for the Town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall on Monday evening, March 1st, 2021. A recording of this meeting will be aired on the town's information cable channel 1301 several times during this week, and the video will be available on the town's website at lexsc.com. Without objection, we are adjourned.